Got to unmute. Hello, everybody. I make a motion to open the meeting. Is there a second?
All second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Liken?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Does anybody have any item or anything to disclose regarding the agenda items before you?
I do not.
Keating, I do not.
I do not.
I do not. Dorothea, would you please read the open meeting compliance certification?
Mayor Plummer, can I request a waving of that since we have no people in attending?
I'm fine with that. I mean, I think we, you know, if anybody jumps on, we can.
We can reevaluate.
Yeah.
Just to save us time.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's kind of like war and peace, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, the first item up are the quotes for the lining of the storm sewer pipes. These are in front of Village Hall. Hi, Zach.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning. Did you want to fill us in and, you know, maybe the board members have a couple of questions?
Yes, so I apologize that I didn't have all of these quotes put together for a meeting last week and I had to pull this together. But just the way the series of events kind of unfolded. Originally, Cold Springs was supposed to do this as part of the project that they're going for DOT. But they pulled out of it last minute because they were spread too thin with too much work and not enough workforce. So I reached out to Villager Construction and they were able to provide a quote pretty quick. I'm not sure if you guys had a chance to see it yet, but it was pretty substantially more expensive than was originally quoted to us a couple of years ago. When all of this work started being discussed. So for $120,000, I felt that that was a bit much that I would find an alternate way of repairing this rather than replacing. So reached out to Scanx to see if the pipes were in good enough condition to be a candidate for CIPP lining. So they came out, cleaned the pipes, inspected it with a. And they said that they're in good enough condition to line them. So they used pricing that was given to us off the term contract for the sanitary sewer line in Sullivan. And provided the full for. Sorry, $19,480. So I am here today asking for approval from the board to go ahead and hire Scanx to line it. Time is of the essence because the bridge is due to open in a few weeks, so kind of under the gun.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
All second.
Second, okay, thank you. And any further, yes, Justin?
Just wanted to mention Zach, I think you explained some of this over email too, and I appreciate your heads up and it makes sense to me. Thank you.
Of course.
Yeah, quite a cost savings.
Yeah.
Well done. Okay, any other questions for Zach or discussion? Roll call, please.
Okay, trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Liken?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Sorry to bug you.
No, it's all good. This is good work that needs to be done and I'm glad you, you know, thanks for looking at the alternative.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah.
I'll keep you posted on the progress.
Okay, yeah, that'll be happening soon. Okay, next up is the Pittsburgh Youth Services contract. Jeff has sent that out and it's also in the packet. This is about, you know, the $1,000 to go to Pittsburgh Youth Services. I also did speak with Jill Harder. She's delighted to have a contract with the village. When I did speak with Bill Smith, he had mentioned that they have always given money to the youth services, but he didn't mention the contract. So here we are. So I think this is a good thing.
And thanks to, thanks to trustee like Geb for asking that question during our meeting. For catching that.
Yep, good one. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract as presented.
So moved.
There a second?
All second.
Roll call, please.
Discussion.
Oh, discussion, sure.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention the context here that is presented is not really consistent with my recollection. Pittsburgh Youth Services was on the agenda for the last meeting. I thought that it was primarily for the duck drop. There is no mention on the agenda that there was to be a $1,000 donation brought forward by Mayor Plummer. So I did not have time to adequately prepare for that or to consider the issues. When the issue, when the item was brought up by the mayor, I asked if it was appropriate or if it was legal, since these are taxpayer funds. And if they could be given as a donation to a private organization, albeit a nonprofit. And I asked if that required legal vetting and if it was going to cause any issues. And Mayor, you responded, according to our attorney, it isn't. Did you talk to her attorney before the last meeting?
I had mentioned it to Jeff and I also spoke with Dorothea and Dorothea, we both thought, because it had been on the budget before in the past, that it had been vetted. And I also spoke with the town supervisor, as I indicated earlier in our discussion. He said, oh, we've always supported them. He did not mention the contract. It wasn't oversight. I do apologize for that. And you may also recall that the previous mayor was sitting in the front row and actually was in agreement with me saying, oh, yes, we have done this in the past. And it's for the good of the community. So I think, you know, it was, it was an error and I'm glad we're correcting it today. And it's $1,000 that I think is well spent to take care of kids in the village.
I think that it is a good thing to take care of kids in the village. Now, as, as we are all residents, not only of the village, but of the town, and we are paying taxes in the town. We are already paying for a contract. And I understand the new contract that's being presented is based on the town contract. So how are the, and let's be clear, this is not a donation. Legally, we cannot make a donation because it's not our money. It's the taxpayer money. So this is instead a contract for services. So if we essentially copied and pasted the contract from the town for services, to which villagers are already entitled, since we're paying town taxes. How is this contract for services different than the one that the town has in place? Will, will village children get better services?
I think, you know, I'm not so sure that the question of how is it different really applies. I think that an additional $1,000 that we do know will go directly to kids in the village, whether they implement additional outreach only to village kids. That's, you know, that's something that youth services certainly can do. I have to say, I'm comfortable with the $1,000. I think it will be put to good use in our village regardless of the taxes that we pay to the town. Frankly, I don't see a downside to this. I think many of us are aware that mental health issues have increased significantly within our community. Certainly since COVID, within the last several years. And I think the $1,000 is well spent. And I would welcome any other comments from board members regarding this matter.
Yeah, if I'd like to continue, please. So I'm not debating whether or not these $1,000 would be well spent. I think that the, the organization is incredibly worthwhile and gives great services to all of the children in the communities that it serves. But my question is, you know, if, if we are truly not considering this as a donation, it sounds like we have no clarity on how the contract for services is different from the one that residents are already paying for. Through the taxes to the town. Now, since the, the village and the town are distinct entities, the village inside of the town, villagers have always been very sensitive of, you know, the fact that essentially they could be perceived as paying taxes twice for the same kind of things. And so we're, we're taking care not to overlap services and we collaborate with the town where possible. So, you know, I just want to have some clarity here about how these contracts are different.
Yeah, thank you so much for, for your thoughts on that. I don't see this, that it, there has to be something that's fundamentally different. I see this as in addition to. And I stand by that. We have a motion in front of us to approve this and a second. If there's any further discussion, yes, Justin?
Yeah, I do have, I have other, other points and concerns here. The, now the, we do have, just curious about the, the names here. So our village engineer is Scott Harder. And I believe that the, the last name, the executive director of Pittsburgh Youth Services shares part of the same last name. Are they related, you know?
Yes, they are.
How are they related? I don't really have any.
Um, I think she's his sister, but you could certainly speak with either one of them.
Okay, and now we have a couple of items that have been in front of us. We do extensive work with the, the village engineer and we appreciate the services. He stepped into a couple of issues that are also politically contentious on, on the board, both in terms of the survey of the arboretum. And the advocacy for the, the grant that was applied for. Now, I'm not saying that there's actual impropriety here, but one of the reasons that this law is in place in New York State is to make sure that we're not giving funds to something to further a particular agenda. I think that the contract lacks complete clarity. It's not differentiated what services are being provided. It seems like this is just a cover for a donation. We're mixing funds with family members that are doing other work with the village. And we're setting a precedent where we're establishing contracts with nonprofits. And I don't think that furthers the, our interests here for villagers who are already paying for these services through their taxes in the town.
Thank you so much again for that comment. Yes, Dan?
So I have a hard stop at 10. Just wanted to make that clear. And Dorothea, your summer haircut looks very nice.
Thank you.
Light and fresh.
No, appreciate everything you're saying, Justin. I do think that. You're a little bit off track with that. That's my opinion. Renee?
Has the village given donations of this size to Pittsburgh Youth Services in the past?
Used to be a line item on the budget.
Yes.
Yeah.
It only stopped when the, it's my understanding as funds became tight.
You know, when everything, the legal, you know, the, the legal expenses sort of kicked in. Yeah, so it's been in the budget.
And so, oh, go ahead.
I just want to point out, we also make a donation or we contribute as part of sponsorship. And as my understanding, this $1,000 was part of sponsorship for the duck drop. We do the same thing with Candlelight Night in that we sponsor, we pay for our portion, we pay for the security for the event. So this isn't uncommon for the village and it's been done in the past.
Related to, to that point, if I may.
Yes, Justin.
Related to that point that our clerk brought up, I agree with that. That is not specified in the contract. And for that reason, I think that, you know, regardless of whether we did this in the past, if it was considered a donation, it was illegal. Because it's not our money. It's the taxpayers' money. And I don't think the contract.
I think you've made those points already. I think, I think you've already made those points. And understand that Pittsburgh Youth Services will be providing a report at the end of the year regarding the use of the $1,000 back to the board. So we know how our money has been used in the village. And by the way, the same thing, excuse me one second, I'm not done. And by the way, we also pay to have a village historian do work on our behalf and we have yet to receive a report from them. So I'm also asking them as well to provide us with a report of their activities on behalf of our village. Yes, Dan?
So Justin just said it was illegal. Does that mean somebody will get arrested?
I don't think that's what he's implying. I think he's implying that regardless of what we've done in the past, we should move forward and do it in the correct, the correct way.
I get that, but the word illegal was used, which is very. You know, that, that implies arrests.
So our, our, yeah, thank you, Dan. Our attorney couldn't be here today. He had another obligation. He wrote this, sent this out to the board. It's been vetted by him. And presented as, as such, and we have a motion and a second.
I just have one final point. When, when I was researching this, I also looked up the median household income and it is not higher in the village. In fact, it's, it's a little bit lower. And so I don't think that it's fair to, to be dictating or saying to village residents that they have to donate more to a particular charity. I think the village residents are highly educated and I support them being able to choose their own charitable organizations to support rather than us determining that for them.
Thank you for your comment. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please. Yeah, Renee, did you have your hand up?
Is there, trustee like Geb, if you were able to talk to Jeff, would you be more comfortable if we just tabled this? I mean, there, we've already decided where we're comfortable with making a donation, but is there some way that the. The services agreement could be worded differently or? Or do you just have, are you now saying that it's not appropriate to even give a donation of $1,000?
We are not giving them a donation. I just want to clarify that. That's why.
That's what we voted on before.
That's why we have the contract before us.
Okay.
And, and so it is the recognition that we will be receiving additional services. In the, to the tune of $1,000 throughout the year. And there will be a report produced for the board at the end of the year by Pittsburgh Youth Services regarding how they have used the $1,000 in our community. And that is legal.
Yeah, I agree. I agree with most of the points brought up by the, the mayor there. And Renee, I appreciate your questions. Really, the, the contract for services and a donation are mutually exclusive. The motion that we made at the last meeting, I believe, is null and void because it can't be done under the New York State Constitution. They have terms that prevent us from giving away tax.
And that's why we're here this morning.
That's correct. So it is not the, you know, that's, that last motion does, does not apply anymore. And so really, all that we're looking at is the contract and the services. And to me, since the contract is not clear in providing differentiated services from the town, then we should not accept that. We should go back to the table and figure out if there is something distinct that we want to pay for, or if we just don't get into it at this point.
I'm looking at the services they provide, whether they're in the town or the village. And I think they're really excellent services that children in our village can use. That's what I'm seeing. I see the list in the contract of those services. Yes, Dan?
I didn't understand Justin's answer to Renee's question. Renee, will you rephrase, will you say that question again? Because I didn't hear the answer to that.
I was asking, I, I won't articulate it the same, but I believe I asked if he would be more comfortable tabling it so that he could talk to Jeff? And if there were any amendments or edits to that services agreement that would make him more comfortable or just he, does he need more time to?
We had a flurry of emails over the weekend to which Jeff responded over the weekend. And I think, I read all those emails as well, and I think our attorney had tremendous clarity in his responses and I'm comfortable with that.
I, I, thank you, Mayor Plummer. I was asking like what Justin's concerns are, what he would.
Asked and answered by the attorney. I don't know what else the attorney can provide because he's been trying to respond all weekend. Yes, Justin?
Yeah, I, I think that the, the contract could be legal in this case, if we are truly not considering it as a donation. My question then just becomes, you know, does that, this can only be considered a contract for services. So do we have different services? That's the only thing in front of us, not the validity of PYS or the value of the services they provide to the community. Just, you know, is this contract for services one that is distinct and adds value to the, the residents of the village of Pittsburgh? And to me, it does not.
I think it does.
There's no condition, there is no condition at which you would vote for this.
If we looked at the contract and we differentiated it from the one the town has, we essentially copied and pasted, as I understand it. I don't have the town contract in front of me. I don't know how much they pay. Does anybody else know how much the, the town pays?
I'm sorry.
$64,000 a year.
Hold on, just asking a very straightforward condition question. Justin, is there any, because I'm trying to get it, the answer to Renee's question, because I know where Renee's going with it. Justin, is there any condition at which you would vote for this?
Yes, if we have a contract that is not just copied and pasted from the, the town that describes different services and what we're paying for. So that we're not doubling down and saying that villagers have to pay more taxes for something they're already paying for on the town per the contract in front of us.
They're not being asked to, there's no tax raise. There's no paying more taxes. That doesn't, I don't, I reject the setup of your, of your, of your comment. It, it doesn't make any sense. There's no increase that's going in. They're not paying more taxes. The construct of that idea is wrong.
I don't know that your assumptions are valid, you know, and I hear what you're saying, Justin, but I, I'm in agreement with Dan. And I'm not so sure, these are the services that Pittsburgh Youth Services provides, whether it's to the school or the town, or in this instance, the village. This is what they do. The idea that we now go back to this entity and say, you've got to do something different. I see the, this $1,000 as in addition to, that we get $1,000 more for our village, for our kids in our village. I don't see the need to somehow have them come up with some other. I think that the, the argument or you're, you're positing of the fact that somehow it has to be differentiated. Is putting a burden on a nonprofit that provides wonderful services. And they can provide $1,000 more services in forms of outreach specifically within our village throughout the year and will report this back to the board. Don't know what else to say. I think it's a good thing. I don't see the downside. And Dan, thank you. I think you, you made some very good points regarding the validity.
Is there any harm in just giving trustee like Geb and whoever else has concerns time to look, look at the two agreements side by side and put it on our next agenda? Is there harm in doing that?
I don't know that there's harm. I'm, I'm just a little surprised. We're kind of all going down a rabbit hole, frankly. I don't think it matters that the services are the same. This is what this organization provides to anybody wanting to use their services. This is what they do. So the idea that it echoes what the town has and the school board has as well. I don't, I don't see that as something that should be perceived as negative. It's, it's $1,000 for these types of services to be used in our village. And to go back to somehow this organization and say, well, you didn't make it look different enough. I don't think is fair. This is a nonprofit. It's $1,000. It'll serve our community.
I don't believe trustee like was saying, I don't believe he was saying, go and ask them to provide something different. I think he was, he wanted some time to look at the two agreements side by side to make sure there wasn't, if, if I'm understanding correctly, just sort of. Are we already covered? Is it enough to be under the town's, the town's 60, 6,400 donation? Are we requiring that taxpayers are, are paying kind of twice for this service is what his concern is?
I understand that, Renee, but again, I agree with Dan. I think that's a specious argument. And Dan, maybe you want to reiterate what you said because you said it very cogently.
I wasn't, I wasn't exactly addressing that part of the argument. I, I just think this is a harmless thing. It's, we're supporting an incredibly important thing in our community with .00006% of the budget. And I, I wish it could be more, frankly. And there's precedent for it. Our counsel has answered all of the questions. There, there are times when we as a government have to do things. You can, you can argue out of doing anything. This is small and harmless.
I think it's for the good of the community and supports our community and an organization that serves our community. So we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Liken?
No.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Wait, there's a hand up? Yes, Justin?
I just had one more member item question. Mayor, when will we be having a public meeting to review the contract for the grant application in Shane Place?
The timeline, do you have the copy of the timeline that the consultant gave us? Dorothea is, Dorothea is going to send that out again. That was discussed at the meeting and discussed regarding the tight turnaround. I thought that we were going to be able to hold another meeting. I, all I did was give you the response from the consultant that the timeframe is tight. They're also on deadlines for other clients as well. And that they said in the timeline that their conceptual design and their budget, you know, the, the conceptual budget would be brought back to the board. If we are awarded the money, which won't even be till December, even if we get the money, that's when we start to hold the charrettes, the public meetings. Again, this is, I'm not done. This is a grant application. It is to get us in the hopper. It is to say, we know we need to do some repairs to our canal path. We, this is also items that have been identified in our comprehensive plan. It is a small piece. This is about a grant application, not anything to do with charrettes. And I thought that was made clear in the meeting. Yes.
Okay, so to, to follow up, based on my understanding in the emails that went around, because you were saying that because the timeline is too tight. The $19,800 project will not be brought back in front of the board for review. Other boards will not have a chance to weigh in before the application is made and the public will not see what the proposal is before the application.
There is no proposal. This is a conceptual design to hopefully get us funding. So then we can have the other boards weigh in. Then we can have the public charrettes. This is, has been done year after year in every municipality that applies for grants. And I think probably some of the issues, for example, that we're having now is that there haven't been many grant applications going out. And for example, Dorothea, do you recall with the rear exit grant for the building, was there, were there public charrettes held and input from, you know, other boards and people weighing in? Okay, so that didn't happen. So here we are. We want to just simply get a grant application and it's a good thing. There's funds available and we're hopeful we can receive funding. And then we'll work with our public and our other boards if we receive the funding, period. I think that's a reasonable strategy that pretty much every single municipality follows. Will the board, will the board be able to see the conceptual design and take a look at what they're estimating? Absolutely. And that was presented at our last meeting in the timeline, which Dorothea is going to send out again. So I have nothing more to say on that. I, I don't know what else to tell you.
Be able to see the conceptual design before it's.
They're sending it out to the board. They're going to be sending, it's like, it's, we do.
Via email or?
Yeah, see, it's in the timeline. I.
So, so you're.
You know what, Dorothea, will you, you have his number. Hang on, Dorothea, you have his number, John Reddington's number. Maybe trustee like could speak with him directly and I think.
No, Mayor, I, I would like to follow up.
Dan has a hard stop at 10.
That's fine. He can leave and we have a quorum. My, my question is.
I also have a contractor here. I have a hard stop in another 15 minutes.
So Mayor, you're saying that we will only be able to weigh in via email. Wouldn't that violate open meeting slot if we are not having a public meeting and that's our only opportunity for input?
We are not, we are not making a decision on spending any money. We are putting in a grant application and that was done in the public arena in the last meeting. That was done publicly. We're putting in an application. We're not deciding on funds. We're not deciding on anything. We're trying to get an application and to get funding. And maybe you also should speak with Jeff Turner about that as well.
Mayor, I just want to summarize on this and everything you said, we're going to spend almost $20,000 for $19,800 for a conceptual design. That will be submitted for a grant application and the board will not have any opportunity to meet in public together in a public meeting with residents of the village and other stakeholders. Like businesses in, in Shane Place.
Board will always have.
Time.
Board will always have an opportunity to meet publicly and with everybody else, everybody you mentioned, if we get the funding. We're jumping the gun on this. We're just trying to get an application in, Justin, to see if we can even get funding. That's all this is. There's nothing unilateral. There's nothing untoward. This has been done for decades with municipalities. There's nothing unilateral, there's nothing untoward, this has been done for decades with municipalities. I, I don't know where we're going with this, we're just trying to get in the hopper to get funds. That's all this is and it's a tight timeframe and I'm sorry that you feel that somehow it's, it's, it's not transparent. It is transparent, we had the meeting, they've discussed this, we discussed it publicly, we even took public input. This is nothing more than an application, I don't know how many times I can say that, I am going to have to sign up in a few minutes here because my contractor is here. Renee, did you want to add anything?
Just to reiterate what was discussed at the last meeting. Putting in this grant application, the concept. Is to simply have us considered for funds, then after that, there will be, if we were to get. Any grants to, or any funding from this grant to do. Any work, any project there, we would then, that would kick off the whole public. Charrettes, you know, as the initial phase. Followed by the thorough review process that we use, Seeker and LWRP and, and other things. Yeah, okay, so we're, this is simply to put in, as we said at that meeting, to get. To submit the grant application which requires a concept, but that concept that's submitted is not. Okay, so once we have the public charrettes and get the public input. That's when, if we even get the money for. The grant funding, okay.
Yeah, so.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, great, okay, so I'm sorry, I have to go, there was a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Trustee Stetser?
Hi.
Trustee Lightgeb?
Hi.
Mayor Plummer?
Bye, thanks everybody, have a wonderful day, take care.